To the Canton Planning Commission for the 7th of February. As usual, we always like to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of Washington, where which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Commissioner Zubor, would you check and see who's here?
Sure, I don't think you're, is your mic on? You might be too far from it.
Okay, sorry about that. Is that better?
Button.
Oh, green light's not on.
Okay, so Commissioner Charia.
Yes.
All right. Commissioner Eggenberger.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Good evening.
Good evening. Commissioner Okon, Commissioner Okon, not here, okay. Commissioner Singh.
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins.
Here.
And Commissioner Weber.
Here.
Commissioner Zubor here and Chairman Green.
Here. And welcome everybody that's in the audience and everybody ultimately who will be watching us on TV. And we have our planning department here, Patrick Sloan and Erin Slutow. Welcome to everybody and hopefully we'll get through this tonight with some good progress for Ken. All right, before we get into that, we've got roll call. We had a meeting on January 3rd. There are minutes to that. Do I hear a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved. Super.
Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Weber by voice vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I miss calling the roll for those. No, not really.
Yes, okay, so let's see, we approved the minutes. We have an agenda tonight, healthy one. Any additional agenda items from staff?
No additional agenda items. The only item I do want to note though is Commissioner Okon had previously emailed staff and noted that he would not be at the meeting tonight, so he had given prior notice.
Oh, okay, all right. Any additional agenda items from the commission? Anything you want to bring up? Okay, do I hear a motion to accept the agenda as written?
So moved.
Support.
All right, we've got a motion by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Foster. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Accepted. All right, our first item tonight is a public hearing, and the public hearings are just that. Not only does the commission get to, you know, discuss this with staff and with the project representative if here, but the public gets a chance to voice concerns, questions, et cetera, and it's a nice process to have. Tonight's first public hearing is Greenland and Sage, where we are considering a minor PDD, that's Planned Development District, for property which is located on the southwest corner of Cherry Hill Road and Denton Road. Proposed use there is a grocery store and bakery. And we, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Patrick, we didn't table it last time, we just delayed it, right? It was on the agenda, but we just delayed it.
Correct, it was postponed from the December 6th agenda, so there was no public hearing on December 6th.
Gotcha, okay, so just for everybody's clarification, because I know that it was originally posted and mailed for everybody for December 6th. Patrick, could you tell us more about this project?
Sure, thank you. The applicant proposes to build a grocery store and bakery on a 1.59 acre parcel on the southwest corner of the intersection of Cherry Hill Road and Denton Road. The building is proposed to be just over 19,000 square feet, and it's a two-story building, primarily it's a first-floor use, but there's a second-floor mezzanine, and the applicant may be making some adjustments to the second-floor mezzanine in terms of design and floor layout. There are two entrances proposed to the site. One entrance is from Market Square Drive to the west, that's an existing drive, and another entrance from Denton Road to the east. The entrance from Market Square Drive is proposed to align with Lantern Way to the west, and there is not proposed to be an extension of Market Square Drive, so the current configuration of Market Square Drive is proposed to be as-is. The entrance from Denton Road is located on the south side of the site, and it's designed to be as far away from the intersection of Cherry Hill Road as possible. The property is in the village edge area of the Cherry Hill Village Overlay District, and grocery stores and bakeries are permitted uses in the Cherry Hill Village Overlay District. However, every site plan has to be a planned development in the Cherry Hill Village District, so that's the reason we're here this evening for a planned development application, is it's a requirement of being in the overlay district. And the overlay district also has some additional design standards that allow, for example, the buildings to be closer to the road, lower setbacks, with an emphasis on the form and design of the building. Previously at the site, there was an application for a Rite Aid, which was approved in 2007, but it was not built, and those plans subsequently expired. The Rite Aid layout back in 2007 was similar to the proposed layout of the Greenland and Sage Building, where the building was located near the northeast corner of the site, with the parking lot located west and south of the building. Some of the main areas of the design of the building, in terms of the schedule of the regulations, as well as any modifications that are requested, are as follows. The front yard setback ranges from eight feet to eight foot seven inches, and that's within the Cherry Hill Village Overlay District, which requires a maximum setback of 15 feet. So, a requirement of the overlay district is that buildings be a maximum setback instead of a minimum setback, so that it encourages a building closer to the road as a downtown form. For the side and rear setbacks, the Cherry Hill Village Design Guidelines require sideyard setbacks of zero to 10 feet. However, with a commercial building and being on a corner like this, the sideyard setbacks are going to be higher. The proposed building is about 84 feet from the west lot line and about 153 feet from the south lot line. Another requirement is the open space requirement. The Cherry Hill Village Design Guidelines require 25% of the gross area to be dedicated as open space. There was no dedicated open space on the previously approved Rite Aid plans, because the required open space was located elsewhere in the village. However, because the original agreement for Cherry Hill Village expired in 2014, the minimum open space requirement applies to individual sites as a result. Therefore, we recommend that the planned development agreement include a modification from the open space requirement. And then the last modification noted here is the building height. The proposed height is 26 feet four inches and designed as two stories. And I'll go back on that, there's actually not a modification requested of the building height. That height and the two-story configuration is in compliance with the Cherry Hill Village Overlay District guidelines. For the traffic management, there are two entrances, one from Market Square Drive and one from Denton Road. And when the town's at Cherry Hill to the west was developed, its planned development agreement included as a definite benefit that the shared access drive of Market Square Drive to provide cross-access to the corner parcel to prevent the need for another driveway connection on Cherry Hill Road for the future development of this corner parcel. And in 2007, 2008, there was recorded a declaration of easement and agreement for maintenance, as well as a reciprocal easement agreement. The project sponsor has also submitted a traffic impact study, which notes the following future deficiencies under the build conditions of what's proposed. The first is northbound on Denton Road for the through in the right at Cherry Hill Road during the AM peak hour. The second deficiency is southbound on Denton Road going left at Cherry Hill Road during both AM and PM peak hour. And the third deficiency is westbound on Cherry Hill Road taking a left at Denton Road during both AM and PM peak hour. The traffic study states that the proposed retail center is projected to cause traffic congestion at the intersection and along the south side of Denton Road. To address those deficiencies, the study recommends the following three mitigation measures. First, a right turn deceleration lane on Denton Road. That improvement is being proposed by the applicant. The second mitigation measure is a left turn passing lane on Denton Road. That improvement is also being proposed by the applicant. And the third is a left turn phase at the signalized intersection of Cherry Hill Road and Denton Road. This improvement is not being proposed by the applicant, because the study states that the need for that phase is not due to new trips of the proposed development. The background traffic has caused the signalized intersection to need a left turn phase to relieve the congestion. In addition to the traffic study, the township has had its traffic engineering consultant, Wade Trim, review the traffic study, and Wade Trim's letter states that the study was prepared using standard procedures and guidelines required by the county and the township. Wade Trim stated that the traffic study is approved subject to two items being addressed. The first item is explaining why the 2018 counts were used in the traffic study, and the applicants have since addressed this, that the reason the 2018 counts were used was because of COVID-19, and COVID-19 threw off all traffic counts in terms of people driving. So, it's pretty common nowadays to see traffic studies use a little bit older data and then project that data out, because prior to COVID-19 is where we had some of our best traffic data going backward. Our traffic engineering consultant with Wade Trim had recommended that this be used as justification, so the applicants have satisfactorily noted that. The second item in Wade Trim's letter to address is to provide a recommendation on mitigating the queue at the southern driveway. The southern driveway of the site, which exits onto Denton Road, our traffic engineer noted that it can block traffic attempting to turn left out of the market onto northbound Denton due to the heavy traffic sometimes of the day. And Wade Trim had recommended a solution to this problem, such as prohibiting the left turn and directing market traffic to use the Cherry Hill Road driveway, instead of turning left onto Denton Road out of the site. However, Wade Trim also noted in its letter that there are a number of ways that this queue can be addressed. Therefore, we recommend prohibiting the left turn onto Denton Road from the site and directing market traffic to exit via Cherry Hill Road, unless an alternative solution is mutually agreeable to Wade Trim and the applicant prior to the Township Board action on the PD application. The applicants have since emailed and said that they would be agreeable to prohibiting the left turn out of the site onto Denton Road, so if that's still the case, we would recommend including that signage on the plan, as well as language in the PD agreement. Going through some of the other items, there are sidewalks existing on the front edges of Cherry Hill Road and Denton Road, and there are internal sidewalks proposed. The site is also landscaped in accordance with the zoning ordinance, with the final landscaping to be determined at the time of site plan review, which comes after planned development review. They have landscaping along the road, the parking lot, and the foundation, as well as screening parking areas and garbage storage. There are a few additional items that we need for screening of the garbage storage. On the south side of the site, adjacent to the residential area to the south, there's a continuous row of evergreen trees proposed, and the site to the south has an opaque fence along its northern lot line, so there's some existing screening, and the applicants are proposing the evergreen trees of Black Hills White Spruce along the southern lot line. On the west side of the site, there's proposed a two-foot-eight-inch masonry wall and a row of upright junipers proposed. The juniper species are an upright variety that has a mature height of 15 to 25 feet and a mature spread of eight to 12 feet. The screening will be finalized at the time of site plan review, and the trash storage and screening details are located elsewhere in our letter. Based on the parking and loading, we find that based on the plans, the 82 spaces are required and 82 spaces are proposed. At the time of site plan review, we can look again at whether a reduction in spaces would be necessary, or if there's anything on the inside of the site, such as if there's more bakery dining area added to the upstairs mezzanine, which could possibly require more parking spaces. We can evaluate the spaces proposed at that time to see if the site would be adequately parked. Based on the parking generation manual and looking at a 19,000 square foot supermarket, the peak number, or the average number of peak spaces is 69 spaces on a Saturday, so it's probably overparked by a little bit, and the final parking calculations we can determine at the time of site plan review. But for planned development review, it's designed to meet the standards of the zoning ordinance. For the lighting, the lighting is also designed to comply with the ordinance in terms of illumination levels. However, the light poles have to be modified to meet the Cherry Hill Village Overlay District design standards, which have the decorative posts of 10 feet in height. For the dumpster enclosure, there's a compactor shown on the southeast corner of the building. It's located as far away as possible from the adjacent residential areas, but the plans must show that the enclosure wall will be at least eight feet high or one foot higher than the compactor, whichever is greater, and it also has to have an opaque gate. These are items that'll be addressed at the time of site plan review, but they're worth noting at this time. The building design meets many of the standards of the Cherry Hill Village Overlay District, including being two stories and having a rectangular form with a storefront facade. It's a large, single-use building, so it does not necessarily have the recommended full-width glass on the ground floor that we might see in the core of Cherry Hill Village. Overall, the building is modern compared to the more traditional buildings in Cherry Hill Village, and the planning commission has discretion on the building design as a result, and it can modify some of the traditional elements. But the building could be modified with more traditional elements like upper cornice and more traditional awnings. The building does, however, have at least 50% brick required by the ordinance, so it does meet that standard. For the signage, the formal wall signage is not yet shown, so we can't determine compliance, but that can be determined at site plan review. The applicants do show a ground sign at the entrance of Denton Road, and ground signs are not permitted in the Cherry Hill Village Overlay District, although some do exist through PD agreements and variances and that sort of thing. So we recommend that a ground sign detail be included that does not exceed the dimensions of the underlying zoning district, which would be a max height of six feet and a max area of 24 square feet, and that it be noted in the PD agreement that there's a modification for one ground sign at that entrance. For the stormwater management, the site is proposed to drain to the existing stormwater ponds located directly south in the corners at Cherry Hill, and they are designed to hold regional drainage. However, the stormwater management is under the jurisdiction of Wayne County, which will be reviewed during site plan review if the PD is approved. And finally, with the planned development agreement, the agreement is written to be consistent with the township's template, and there are some minor revisions required to the agreement. First, to permit a ground sign, which we recommend a max height of six feet and a max area of 24 square feet. Second, to permit the building within the 25-foot clear vision triangle at the intersection of two public roads, as illustrated on the plans, which is about a triangle of 17 feet. And third, to permit the site to have less than 25% open space. That concludes our staff report, and staff's recommendation is approval of the planned development district on the subject parcel, subject to the following three conditions being satisfied prior to Township Board action. First, revising the PD agreement to include modifications to allow for less than 25% open space, a clear vision triangle of less than 25 feet, and a ground sign no greater than six feet in height and 24 square feet in area. Second, addressing zoning ordinance compliance items noted by staff, including lighting and compactor gates. And third, prohibiting the left turn onto Denton from the site and directing market traffic to exit via the Cherry Hill Road driveway, unless an alternative solution is mutually agreeable to Wade Trim and the applicant. That concludes our report, and we'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. Let us begin with a public hearing on this, this is a public hearing, so we need to open the public hearing. And Patrick, do we have anyone, are we Zooming tonight as well?
Yes, we are Zooming, and I believe that there are public in the audience, and I believe also the applicant has a representative in the audience as well.
Okay, we're going to start with the audience that's here.
Mr. Chairman, I move to open the public hearing.
Okay, all right. All right, we've got a motion to open the public hearing by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Weber. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, here the public hearing is open. Yes.
I just want to clarify one thing with the actual procedural.
Sure.
Because I know this was noticed for December.
I don't think you're tucking into your mic.
Sorry. I know this was noticed for December, but I just want to make sure that proper notice was still maintained for this public hearing, so that no one can say that they didn't know about it being heard tonight. Is that, so we're good on all those procedures?
Correct. For the public hearing this evening, we published a notice in the newspaper, and we mailed out notices with the tonight's date, time, place, as well as a Zoom link, so that people could participate virtually.
Okay, fair enough. I just wanted, I didn't want anyone to complain that they didn't get proper notice of this, of the recontinuation or postponement of the hearing before.
Okay, thank you very much. Patrick, is the project sponsor or representative here today or on Zoom? Oh, he's right up front. Would you like to say a little bit about this project? Want to step up to the podium?
Thank you, good evening. Really, I-
Who are you, sir?
My name is Najem Samoan with CDPA Architects. We have been working with Pat and the planning department and our client for now, it's probably over a year going back and forth, and the report that Pat presented, it's pretty much comprehensive of, you want all, basically over all the items that we have discussed. We are really looking forward to proceed and continue on with the, going to the full site plan approval. I understand that the conditions that Pat had indicated, we have discussed those and we indicated our basically consent to the no-left turn onto Denton. So, I believe we're at the stage where the project is ready to go forward.
All right, let's see what we can do about that. Okay, thank you.
If you have any specific questions or the public has any-
Well, okay, as we go forward, we may have some questions for you.
Absolutely, thank you.
All right, thank you. So I'm going to proceed right from our audience and ask if there's any comments or concerns from anyone that would like to come forward. All right, come on up. We need your name and address.
They still need to fill out the pink sheet.
And we need you to fill out one of our handy little forms there.
Bill McCormick, and I live in the towns of Cherry Hill, and I just bought my townhouse recently, and I'm very concerned about my property value, looking right at a grocery store. So, my biggest concern, I told Patrick, is I would really want like a heavy privacy, as many like, I don't know if junipers are going to be enough, but like I'd like evergreens, like to have that privacy, because all that traffic turning off of Denton is going to be shining in my windows of my townhouse, and my daughter's bedroom's right there, and I would really appreciate like as much privacy, because we paid a lot of money for these townhomes. I mean-
So you live in the new building that's right on Cherry Hill? Is that? Okay.
My townhouse will be facing directly to the grocery store, so my biggest concern is just to put enough evergreens or privacy, so that, to maintain my property value.
So what you're concerned with is if a car turns in and they're facing, the car is facing west, the headlights will go into your living space, right?
Grocery store off Denton, they're going to face directly into my townhouse.
Gotcha, okay.
That's my biggest concern.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Yes, if you want to come on up, you need to come up to the podium each time.
Ms. McCormick, please don't forget to fill out the form with your address.
Yes, we'll need that.
It's on the-
Can you, I understand your concern.
Patrick, could you bring this up on the screen? I think he's going to show the landscape.
Yeah, yes, yes. I wonder if, McCormick, did you say?
Yeah.
Okay, if you had the opportunity to see the drones, did you?
Um-
This is, your townhouse is over here.
Okay.
So, there's an entire wall in here.
Yeah, my townhouse is like right there.
Right.
So that's what I'm concerned about, is when the traffic-
Exactly, and there's a row of evergreens in here that are blocking this.
Oh, good.
In addition to a wall for the noise as well.
Oh, good, that's what my biggest concern is.
Yeah, even when the cars, the vehicles are parked, the headlights are going to hit the wall.
Okay, because my townhouse is like right there.
Exactly. All right, so-
All right, well, thank you.
Yeah, the other concern also that I would like to point out is the fact that, which I understand when you, when we say a grocery store, no disrespect to Kroger, this is not looking like Kroger. This is what it looks like. What we try to create is kind of a downtown, multi-small store environment, if you will, and that's what we're trying to create here, so.
Like an upscale?
Yes, exactly, so.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
Patrick, and one of the, one of the main complaints I read in all these letters is about it being a huge grocery store, and that's the words I see a lot. Can you give an idea or a perspective of the size of this grocery store versus, say, a Kroger? Because I think people hear grocery store and they think of Kroger, they think of Myers. I think this is more of a, correct me if I'm wrong, this is more like a specialty store kind of thing.
What I would call, what I would call this bakery and grocery store, really this is a boutique-like, you know? It's even the bakery and with the store, the combination of these two, mind you, these are two different businesses, but actually they're combined together under one roof, but they're separate on the inside as well. So it's a, it's an opportunity for, not only getting, most of the groceries are also ethnically oriented, so they would be, in addition to the regular groceries that you would get at Kroger, but obviously at smaller amounts, you would get also the ethnic products.
Is it fair comparison to say like Westport, Westborne Market in downtown Plymouth?
Yes, yes. In addition to the bakery and the, yes, we did send Pat some revisions for the mezzanines and some ceiling on there, and the idea there is to have, to provide an opportunity for the shoppers to really spend some time there and use that ceiling area. And one thing, and I'm not sure, you may have mentioned that, Pat, but I, I don't know if I missed it, is the seasonal ceiling on Cherry Hill. We also have a patio for the summertime, so for, because the idea is to create a walkable sidewalks and a walkable area, and we think we responded to that in a good way, so.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else from the audience have any questions or concerns? All right, let's-
Mr. Chairman, I move to close the public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Never mind.
We have people in Zoom land.
I take that back, thank you.
Yep, no problem. And I want to point out, Commissioner Weber alluded to this, and we did receive, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, 39 comments by email that were passed along from Patrick to us, and we read all of those, we do read those. I want to suggest though to Patrick, to emphasize to people that, whereas we ask those who come before us here to give their address, the emails don't require that, and I think that's important, to know exactly where people are living or what their concern is based on. So just a suggestion that I have going forward, since we're collecting emails like that, that they should contain addresses. I think it's only fair. I agree.
And can I also, as long as we're talking about the emails, point out, I actually counted up when they came in, I wish I would have brought the note with me, but I forgot all about it, but I counted up how many people were pro and how many people were against, and it was almost 50/50.
It was. I just counted two.
Yeah, thank you. So we had a lot of people supporting it and a lot of people concerned about it.
Yep, absolutely. So Patrick, do we have anyone in the Zoom arena that would like to- Yep, absolutely. So Patrick, do we have anyone in the Zoom arena that would like to comment on this? Do they have anybody that have their hands up?
In Zoom, there's one person with their hand up. So anyone who's on Zoom and wants to comment can raise their hand. Right now, we have one. Donald Braim, I hope I pronounced that correctly, whom I'll allow to talk here.
Okay.
Donald, if you want to unmute yourself.
Yes, yes. Can you hear me now?
Yep, yes.
Okay, yes, I had sent a letter to Mr. Sloan some time back with several questions and concerns regarding the development. And I live on Division Street in the Corners subdivision, and I'm the first house in the subdivision. So I'm, I'm going to be the closest single-family residence to the development in the area. And I live right next to the retention ponds that were mentioned. So I guess my first concern, most major concern, is about the water runoff. And I know you mentioned that, that those ponds are somehow maintained or, or run by the county. I don't fully understand the relationship there. However, I, from what I understand, the pond maintenance is the responsibility of our HOA. Maybe you can confirm that, I don't know. But after seeing the pond and how it reacted to the rains this past summer, when we had some pretty heavy downpours, the pond directly next to my house, it didn't overflow, but it was quite a bit of water in it. And that pond is already filled up with a lot of reeds, so there's maintenance required on that pond. I know our HOA has been talking about that. I'm wondering what that situation is, because now we're going to put a large parking surface and roofs. That water is going to drain as, as it appears to be planned to drain into that pond. I think there could be a problem.
Would you like to address that, Patrick?
Yes. So from, from the documents that we have, the pond is designed as a regional detention basin to, to handle future development at the corner. However, when the development is proposed, Wayne County will have to review the proposal for a number of reasons. One of them being that they'll require a right-of-way permit from Denton Road, and Wayne County will evaluate the stormwater at that time. And it'll make it, Wayne County will make a determination whether the existing pond is, is adequate. I believe the documentation is in place to, to allow for that to be the shared pond the way it's designed. However, in terms of the volume, capacity, performance, things of that nature, those are under the Wayne County jurisdiction. So Wayne County will review that at the time of site plan review.
And if, if any maintenance is required, it's still on the HOA to provide that, correct? Am I gathering that correctly?
We would have to look specifically at the, at the legal agreement, because I think as, as, as a contributor to the pond, I think that the property at the corner would also be party to that agreement. So there would probably be some maintenance obligations, although we'd have to look at the legal agreement of that to, to make sure and make sure that that's still, that's still valid. I think if it's a regional basin, the vast majority of the time, that property owner is responsible for current as well as future development.
Yes, okay. Okay.
Yes, I tend to think that at a minimum, the pond closest to the development will have to be dredged and increase capacity to some level. I certainly don't want water ending up in my backyard and basement because of the additional runoff. As I'm sure everybody would understand.
Patrick, is there any leeway here for cooperation or, let's say, a co-condition between this project and the HOA? If, if there's an effect like that, I mean, you know, would they be party to any improvements on those ponds?
We would have to check the-
We don't, we don't know if it's necessary, but I mean, I'm saying, you know, is there something that we can do that assures the HOA that they don't have to bear that entire expense?
There may already be the sufficient legal documents in place that would assure that. I, I don't know that for sure in terms of the, the maintenance going forward and what the obligations are and how those get initiated in terms of maintenance or any changes to the pond. But we would have to look at the existing agreements in place to make sure that that adequately covers that. And we could talk to our engineering division about that.
Okay, all right. Is there anyone else in Zoom land that has their hand up? And thank you, sir, for your comments. Appreciate it.
Yes.
I don't see anybody else with their hand raised in Zoom.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I choose, I choose. I move to close the public hearing.
All right, we've got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Zuber to close the public hearing at seven, what is it, 7:37? And support by Commissioner Weber. All in favor of those, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, here, the public hearing is hereby closed. All right, let's, let's go to the commission and let's start, we'll start over here with Commissioner Singh.
Yes, my question is for you, the entrance, which is from that side road of Cherry Hill. Few of the concern I read in the emails were that it's directly coming out of the entrance of that condo units too. Is there a way to move that a little bit or can we even do that on Cherry Hill? One entrance from Cherry Hill and one from Denton, just so that, that condo association or the condos are totally out of question? Because there are, there were some concerns about kids playing in that area. The cars are directly coming out where the entry of that condo association is.
You're talking about creating a curb cut on Cherry Hill on the property?
Either that or is there any other option of moving that nor directly in front of that condo association's entrance?
Yeah. We did have the curb cut or the drive in a different location. It was further to the south, actually. But during the review process, we were requested to move it, to move it to the north. If you do review the plans that were approved for Rite Aid, the drive was almost at the end of the property. And it even had on-street parking at the condominium site. Right now, all we have is just that curb cut. If there was another way, obviously, we would do it. The only other way to do that, like the chairman indicated, that a curb cut onto Cherry Hill. But that is going to create actually a traffic, a traffic issue because it's so close to the corner.
Commissioner Singh, would you, would you then eliminate the Denton Road curb cut? Is that what you're saying? You'd add one on Cherry Hill and then eliminate Denton?
Not specifically. I'm asking that if we can add it on Cherry Hill, but if we can move that. Because right now, it's on that side road, but directly in front of the entrance of that road going into the condo association. So can that be moved closer to the-
So change the alignment?
Yeah.
Patrick, could you open that up on the screen so we can see what, exactly what he's talking about?
What was the theory then, I guess this is to the staff? If that's true, what was the theory of having it, the curb cut moved to the north directly across from the entrance to the condominium development?
That's the question for the architect or for Patrick. Is it possible to move it to Cherry Hill? Or to somewhere else instead of directly in front of that road? Is Cherry Hill, moving it to Cherry Hill creates a lot more problems and troubles in terms of traffic?
Closer to the intersection.
Yeah, I think, because I think our traffic consultant was opposed to that.
I'm not a traffic engineer, but I know from, from working with, with them is that if you, if you were to create a drive right here, this drive is too close to this drive. You're not going to have issues with.
Right.
That's why this drive actually, Pat had us move this drive that was down here at the bottom. And we had even, like I said, we had- Can you hear me?
Yes.
They won't be able to hear you in Zoom land.
Maybe they will.
We even had on-street parking here. All that was removed. And then the drive was aligned with the drive that's going into the condo in here. That's, that's the good traffic.
So what was the theory behind that, Patrick?
Of having the driveways aligned?
Yeah.
Generally, for, to have driveways aligned, if there, if there's someone who is leaving towns at Cherry Hill and wants to make a left, and someone coming out of here that is either going straight or right, to have the intersections aligned is, it's easier for drivers to, to negotiate those turns. There were a few alternates that, that were reviewed. The first is that on the original Rite Aid plan, Market Square Drive went even farther south, almost down to the southern property line. And with the existing curb cut already put in place and a lot of existing green space here in a residential development, we had asked the applicants to not continue the drive farther south and to try to put that curb cut on the existing so it's less impactful to the residences. And then going farther north, if the driveway were to be moved farther north closer to Cherry Hill, that could also create an issue where if someone turns in from Cherry Hill and they want to make a left into the grocery store, if the drive is on the north and there's traffic coming north, or if there's a backup here while there's a car here waiting to turn left at the north part of the site, that could potentially back up traffic onto Cherry Hill if there's, there's competing cars coming in and out. So we want to locate that intersection, that drive as far away from Cherry Hill as possible without extending Market Square Drive.
Yeah, I definitely wouldn't want it any further north.
Does that answer your question, Commissioner Singh?
Yeah, it does. Thank you.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes, thank you so much. So, and I guess that's the crux of a lot of my, my question, and that is the, the traffic impact, right? It is, it's probably the major question that we have here. And I'm looking at a couple of different things. Number one, the R1 to the north, just looking at growth. And when I mean R1, I mean the unbuilt, or I'll call it partially built at this point, tractable land to the north of Cherry Hill. We're looking at a lot more units that will be on that site, and the traffic impacts are going to be huge. Just as a matter of practicality, my kids go to school at Workman. And in the morning and in the evening, there are tremendous, tremendous backups. Now, that may not coincide directly with the hours of a grocery store or boutique market, but we have to look at the infrastructure and understand, is there something that's going to come that's going to allow us to mitigate any of this before we start to think about what's going to happen on this particular site? Meaning, is there going to be some sort of partnership with the county to look at? Things like this right turn, excuse me, the right turn slowdown lane? Or any other infrastructure improvements that will allow us to be able to mitigate congestion at this intersection? Because this is a very transactional business. You go into a grocery store. You're going to go in, you're going to get what you need, and you're going to leave. That's a ton of in and a ton of out. And we want to be sensitive to that fact and understand that the traffic impacts can be great when you're talking about a transactional business. If this were an office building, that'd be different. You're going to go somewhere, you're going to stay for an hour or two or three, and then you're going to come back out. But the very nature of what's going to be happening on this corner is specific to a lot of activity. And I want us to be mindful of that as we start to think about the PD. The site plan, that's going to come later down the road, but I'm concerned about the nature of the business that we have here. One of the other things, Patrick, I wanted to address was the open space requirement. As we can see, there is residential just proximate. And I want to call, I'm sorry, your condo is homes, the town's at Cherry Hill. Yeah, sorry. We really want to be sensitive to the green space that's already there. And I heard you say that we wanted to either increase or decrease the 25% open space requirement. I want to get some clarity there on what would be required by the applicant. That's the second part of my question. And my last question, directing traffic to Cherry Hill instead of Denton for the left turn. So that would mean that the curb cut on Denton would in some way, or there'd be some signage that would say, hey, you can't turn left onto Denton Road headed north. I'm assuming that's what the signage would say. But that doesn't prevent any car from making that left-hand turn from the parking lot onto Denton. Could we utilize some sort of, you know, concrete traffic control device that would only allow them to make the right-hand exit? Because when I look at the plans, it's still marked as two egress lines that would allow them to go out and make that left turn. I don't think that's been marked on the plans just yet. So those are things that I think, along with the building design, it's, it's really modern. I want to make sure that it fits into the character of Cherry Hill Village. And I think you addressed that, Patrick. I think there's some things that, that could be changed in order to make it fit within the character of the community. But other than that, those are my questions and my concerns, and I want us to be really, really sensitive to the fact that we want to understand what growth looks like, what traffic will look like, and how that impacts that area. Thanks so much.
Okay, well, let me ask you though. You laid a lot of groundwork there. What are your suggestions for the project development process? What, in, in any of those arenas, whether it be the appearance, the aesthetics, or the traffic flow, or working with Wayne County? You know, what do, what do you suggest on any of that?
Definitely. I think, and I, thank you so much for allowing me to be able to address that. I think it's imperative that we start to talk about, you know, is there going to be some sort of memorandum of understanding or agreement with the county that, hey, this is going to be an intersection that's going to have some increased activity, not only with the store, but with the residential that's going to be coming? And are we going to be able to tap into infrastructure improvements slash funding that's going to allow us to be able to make those changes at the corner? They're definitely going to be necessary. I don't know the last time you've driven there, but it's getting bigger, faster, sooner.
Well, you know that, that, anyone else, if they'd like to comment on this, Wayne County is a reactionary entity. And we can't really demand of them that, oh, well, you need to do this, you need to do that. They're going to respond to what's happened in the, you know, in the past, not, well, okay, if they put this in, we're going to need to do this. They're going to wait and see how that all, that all shapes out. So, you know, the best we can do, because we don't own any of that, those streets, is to speculate that, you know, we're going to work with the project development to make the best of the situation now and hope that if there needs to be any improvements, that Wayne County will get on board at that time. I don't know that you can make any, any stronger connection with the county than that.
No, I appreciate that. Thank you. And then one last thing, Mr. Chairman. I, I think we can go about it a couple of different ways. You can let the, the development follow the infrastructure or the infrastructure follow the development. And lots of times, we, we have to play catch-up, but I totally understand. Your last, your last question to me was, how can we improve it? Normally, a normal grocery store is going to be about 35, 40,000 square feet or a little bit more, probably not more than 60,000. But boutique stores now, you talk about Trader Joe's, Aldi, we have an Aldi in Canton, I believe, right up forward. Those stores are more in the 10,000 to 15,000 square foot range, some a little more, some a little less. I think there's, there's a possibility we could start to think about how we shrink the size. I think we're 19,000 girl square feet on the, on the store, Patrick. Correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's 19,000. Okay, we could, we could start to think about, is there an opportunity to be able to shrink the, the store back from, from the right-of-way? And, and start to add a little bit more green space to really minimize its effect on the actual corner. Still keeping the business. I think that's important. The business is very, very important. But how do we keep the character of the neighborhood and allow for the business to still thrive? Thank you so much.
Okay, all right, fair enough. Commissioner Eganberger?
Yes, thank you. Patrick, I wonder if you could help me. On my page, it's number 17. I'm not sure where it is on yours, but it's, it's where it talks about the traffic improvement study or whatever, impact study. And it talks about kind of three things that are recommended. And the first two, it says- And the first two, it says this improvement is being proposed by the applicant. Does that mean the applicant's planning on doing something with it or just they agree with it being a good idea and we just have to hope Wayne County would go along with it? And it's basically talking about that intersection and, and things that they think need to be done, a right turn lane, a left turn passing lane, a left turn phase. What, what are the options with that? Would that really happen or is it just saying, gosh, that would be good? Oh, sorry, I'm not talking into my mic.
Sure. So the, the first one is, well, the first two of the three that are identified in their traffic study, they put in their plan development agreement that they propose doing those improvements. And those are, um, the first, um, the right turn deceleration lane on Denton Road, that'll be going southbound on Denton as someone's going to take a right into the store. Adding that right turn deceler, deceleration lane will allow someone to get into that lane so that traffic continuing south on Denton Road will be backed up as a result of people turning right. So they're, they're proposing that in their PD agreement. The next one that they're proposing, a left turn passing lane on Denton. So if someone is going northbound on Denton and they want to take a left into the grocery store, there would have to be a widening there to allow for a dedicated left turn into that southern driveway of the store to get in there without backing up the traffic going northbound on Denton, continuing up to Cherry Hill. So those are the, those are two road improvements that the applicant proposes to do. The third item that's no, that's noted in the traffic study that they weren't proposing to do is to have a left turn phase at the signalized intersection of Cherry Hill Road and Denton Road. There are the lights there, but the, the left turn phasing is not there. And our, our traffic and they note in their traffic study that the need for that phases is not due to new trips. That's an existing condition. And our traffic engineering consultant was in agreement with that analysis in terms of that being an, an existing condition that is in need of even without the, the grocery store. So there's no long-term solution that I know of in terms of a left turn phasing there unless the county were to do an analysis and do upgrades on its own.
Right. So the problem is, is we look at this, we say, yeah, this is a problem. Yeah, it's going to get worse. But we just have to hope that Wayne County does something about it.
Well, in some cases where there are traffic, um, the traffic delays or items that are noted in a traffic study that are noted as deficiencies, sometimes they, they get improved. Sometimes it's either through a PD agreement or in the absence of a PD agreement, sometimes the county requires it. Where the county has jurisdiction on the road, so sometimes the county does require improvements. And other times, sometimes improvements don't happen with the development and they take place at some other point in time.
And we don't have a way of saying that we can't approve the PD agreement unless Wayne County says they're going to do that, right?
With, with the light itself, we would probably have to ask the township attorney in terms of, um, any additional items that go beyond what's being included in the PD agreement as definite benefits to, to see what, what the township can and, and can't require as a condition of PD approval.
Doesn't that go for the, the other improvements too? I mean, we're, if, if we're asking, if we're making a requirement to do some reconfiguration to the road or the intersection, what ability do we have to enforce that if that's under county jurisdiction? I mean, it's, it's fine to say it's going to be in the PD agreement, but if Wayne County is the one that has to do it, they're not a party to the PD agreement.
Yeah, with the first two, with the right turn deceleration lane and the left turn passing lane, um, those are improvements. They're, um, they're noted in the traffic study and the applicants have included them as definite benefits in the PD agreement. So, um, we can follow up with our engineers in terms of if there's any kind of preliminary design or additional language to put in the agreement to assure what exactly it is that we're discussing. But ultimately, um, the county would have to review the traffic study and accept the conclusions of the traffic study so that when they do the county permit as a condition of the PD agreement, they would also be doing those, those improvements.
Right. But we're here, we're being asked to approve something on the if come, basically. I mean, we're, I mean, and, and this is, to me, this is a significant issue to be discussing and one that we probably need, that we do need to consider in our, whether we approve or not approve. And we're being asked to approve something with a condition over something that we have no jurisdiction. And we don't know if the county's going to approve or not. Likely, they probably would. But who knows, we, you know, we're, we're kind of at the mercy of Wayne County, I feel, unless I'm missing something.
We're always at the mercy of Wayne County.
And I, that's what I mean. I mean, so for us to put conditions on, do they have to, does this have to be reviewed and approved by Wayne County before they get a building permit?
Yeah, before they even get a, a curb cut permit, when they go to county engineering to review their plans, they need a curb cut permit from Denton Road to, to do that. And the county will evaluate the curb cut, they'll evaluate the applicant's traffic study as well to determine what the impact on the traffic will be. And if they, um, if the county accepts the results of the study and it can require those road improvements as a condition of the permit. In this case, they, they put it into their PD agreement that assures it. As opposed to say, if it were a residential development, that was a generic, a generic site condominium that was a non-PD. They may have a traffic study that shows that there are road improvements and the county may accept that. But as a condition of a generic site condominium, the township can't necessarily require road improvements. They, because the county would have jurisdiction there, the township would just approve it based on what's proposed in the study and, um, and, and, and that the county would accept that as part of its condition to do the, the curb cut permit. In this case, it's the same principle, except that it would be in the PD agreement as a condition of their approval. So, yeah, they would need the county's permission to allow them to put those lanes in and widen it. But they have a traffic engineer prepare their study saying that's what's needed and that there's a design that would, that would produce that.
So say the county doesn't agree, but they issue the curb cut anyway. They don't agree that those improvements are necessary, but they issue the curb cut permit. But as all of us, and granted, we're not traffic engineers, but our tra, our traffic engineer and, and the applicant's engineer has expressed that this is a concern. What, so we just, we and the residents are just have to accept that? And the county's taking the responsibility for anything that bad that happens there?
Well, I, I would have to ask our engineering division to see if that's ever come up where there's been a condition based on, uh, a traffic study by a traffic engineer and the county refused a road improvement. They can, they can refuse permits or they can adjust permits based on the location of curb cuts. But if the curb cut is, is the same as what's on their permit and there's improvements to their road right of way that otherwise meet county standard, I don't know. I'll have to ask engineering to see if the county's ever refused any per, uh, improvements on their road as a result.
I, I think one of my frustrations here is I think this looks like a great marketplace. I, I think it would be a fun place to shop and I think that there's a lot of people that would enjoy it. But we already have a failing intersection. And whether the marketplace is going to cause it to be, can it be more failing? We're, we're looking at something that already is an issue. And, and I don't feel good about saying, sure, well, we'll just throw some more traffic in here. And I feel frustrated that we don't seem to have a, a option to be able to say, hey, let's, let's make this work, but also keep the area safe for everybody. I, I, I'm hearing that also, you know, from other commissioners, like how can we, how can we come up with a way to make this safe? And, and work with Wayne County to make it happen.
Well, I think, so just to piggyback on that, Commissioner Eggenberger, speaking of Wayne County, I think we have a similar issue, although maybe not as big, on the repent, retention pond issue. I mean, the county has to review that as well. I mean, we can say to address our earlier speaker's comments about his concern about it flooding and all that. And I, and I think it's a legitimate concern. But again, we have to, we can make that a condition to approval that Wayne County has to sign off on it. But again, we're, we're kind of, our hands are kind of tied to what the county says or doesn't say. And it's, it is to, to agree with you, it is frustrating because I, I feel like there's no, I feel like, almost feel like in some ways, there's no wiggle room for us here. And it is sort of frustrating because I, I, I agree, I too, I like the, I like the plan, but I am concerned about the, the peripheral issues.
All right, let's, let's, uh.
I was just going to say, is there a way to, to put in the PD agreement the third, um, recommendation about creating a left turn phase of a signalized intersection? The one where it's failing, but it's failing already. It's not due to new trips. Is there a way to put that into, we would like that to also be a part of the PD agreement? That at least would make me feel better that we've got something else happening at that intersection.
That, that would probably be a question for the township's attorney. And, and the reason being is that it's, it's an existing failing condition. And ultimately, when it comes down to whether to require road improvements in a county right of way, that's at the discretion of Wayne County. If this were to be something that was a condition of approval, the definite benefits that are in the PD agreement, those have to be put forward by the applicant. So the township can't require additional public road improvements as a condition. But, um, the applicant can put them voluntarily in the PD agreement and subsequently the county can require them as a condition of its permitting.
So this could be a, a catch 22 in the sense that undeveloped, this intersection, which is already not functioning very well, is not going to be improved by Wayne County. But if there was a development such as this one on, on the books and it was actually functioning and made it worse, then Wayne County would be forced to respond. That's what, basically what we're, what we're at here.
Well, with the left turn signal phasing, that, I, I don't know if they have a plan for a left turn signal phase there or not. We can ask them. We can work with our engineering division to see if, uh, there's any plan by the county to do that based on the existing conditions.
So, uh, to, well, to Commissioner Watkins' point, is there, is there any way in which we can get their involvement immediately on this, on this project? I mean, it's, it's, we're, we're speculating, right, on, on Wayne County? And that's always a dangerous thing to do. So why can't we have direct communication with Wayne County about a project like this? Before we, before we proceed?
We, we may be able to reach out to them and ask. I don't know if, I don't know what they would give us at this point because sometimes it's, it's a chicken and egg where, um, if you're not applying for a permit from Wayne County, it's, it's difficult to know what exactly they'll require. But they're not ready to apply for a permit for Wayne County because there hasn't been that, that level of engineering done on the site. I don't believe, so.
But if there's, but, but what I'm getting at is that if there is no impetus to improve that property and thus cause the situation to even get worse, we're not going to get their attention is really what it gets down to.
Well, we can, we can reach out to Wayne County and our, our engineering division can reach out to Wayne County to see what kind of feedback we can, we can get from the county. I don't know if it'd be the level of something that we would get in a permit where they put in writing, you know, with a permit number, et cetera, of what the requirements are. But we can, we can have our engineers reach out to Wayne County to see what the, what the protocols would be and what their reaction is to the traffic study.
Well, okay, but reaching out doesn't, doesn't help our project sponsor, doesn't help the development, doesn't help us in, from the, from the community standpoint. It seems to me that this project is, is lacking the proper impetus from the, the powers that be that are going to make this work. We've already gotten feedback that that's a concern from people that live in the area right now, that there had, there's traffic problems and why add, add to the, to the difficulty? It could be that, that with the, the new signalization or with some curb cuts or not curb cuts, but some, some lane adding and some signage, et cetera, et cetera, we're actually making the situation better with this project. But we won't know that until we actually do the project and then that's a guesswork. It just seems like we're not, we're not going about this the right way. I mean, I, I like this project. Don't get me wrong. I really like this project. There's some tweaking that I think we need to do. But I think right now, we don't have enough, um, information, uh, from, from the partner that's probably the most important partner right now, which is Wayne County.
Well, I think, Mr. Chairman, you're asking something that you mentioned earlier about Wayne County is we're asking Wayne County to be proactive rather than reactionary. And I'm with you. I mean, I agree 100% with you. I don't know if we can get them to do that.
Can we drive, can we drive this issue? I mean, you know, we've always, we've always had an ultimate response from Wayne County, ultimate, okay? So we build something, we develop something and then they, they come on board, you know, a couple of years later, what have you. But this sounds like a situation where we need them now. We need them to be involved in this. To, to say, hey, you know, if, if we do this, if we improve that intersection with the development, will you do your part in, you know, in helping us with the traffic? Is that something that we can do?
Well, we, we can work with our engineering division to reach out to Wayne County to see what, what kind of response we can have based on the traffic study and based on the development. And we can, we can have that conversation with them. I can't make any promises now, but we can, we can ask them to see if they're able to make any commitments at this.
Well, I, I think it's important because I, I think to Commissioner Watkins' point, we have to look beyond this, this project because it's obvious now that Cherry Hill Village is getting the attention of the development community in the commercial aspect. We've had them build houses. There's no question that has been a success. But the other part of Cherry Hill Village was the commercial aspect. That was always on the books and the people are not aware of this. It was always designed that part of Cherry Hill Road, part of Ridge Road and part of Denton Road would have some commercial entities there. It was always part of, part of the, the downtown kind of quiet, you know, little, little community aspect, kind of creating a little Plymouth or Northville or whatever, right within Canton. So this is, this goes right, right along with that plan. However, we can't just throw it in there and then, you know, when it turns into a, a traffic disaster because now people are changing their traffic patterns, um, it becomes even worse for us. I think it, it might be time for us to, 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 to do what we can to pressure Wayne County to get on board with us. We're trying to achieve something here. I, I don't think that's, that, that's too big an ask. I think we should probably proceed with what we're doing. And, but we may have to have a contingency, quite honestly, contingency of, of having Wayne County in on some of the decision-making. I, I don't, I don't really see any other way of going about this. Any other comments from, oh, yes, go ahead. You want to come up to the, the podium?
Well, the way I understand it now, this, if, if your board is to approve this tonight, this is not the final approval.
Right, correct.
One step in the, in the process. Also from working on other projects and, and, uh, whether it's the county or even MDOT, the state on other, you know, thoroughfares. When there's a requirement for a traffic study, this is really the basis that whether it's the county or MDOT, this is what they refer to. So they have, they, they ask for the, the traffic study and they base their judgment on the findings of that, of that, of that study. And that study has been done already and, uh, and, and the township consultant, Wade Trim, has, uh, uh, contributed to that and they put in their, their opinion and, and made those recommendations. So it is kind of, it would be difficult from, from at least being in this industry for, for a long time to see that the county is, would come in and tell Wade Trim, no, no, this is not the case. We, we don't need this. That's highly unlikely to happen. So my, my, my guess and like Pat says, I, I don't speak for them. I, I can't give you a guarantee. But my, my good guess is that the county is going to go along with those recommendations for sure.
Well, then, all right, if you're willing to say that, then are you willing, then we, if we choose to approve this, that we condition this upon Wayne County's ultimate approval and of the, of the suggested improvements to Denton Road, including the left turn phase signal? Are you willing to accept that?
To condition this. To condition this upon the county improving the road, I think it's, you know, that's something between the township and the county. I mean, if, if, I mean, I would find it unfair to use this as a, to use the project as a, I guess as a bait, you know, for the county.
No, I don't, I don't, but see, I, I disagree, I don't think that's what we're doing. We have to look at all aspects of this project.
I agree.
Including what's safe and proper for the community. And the traffic portion of this is a legitimate concern. I mean, if that, we, we're talking about an intersection that's already failing without anything being on that property. So for, if, for us to approve it without, without that security, I'll call it, would be reckless on our part. So I, I respectfully, I understand what you're saying, but I respectfully disagree with what you're saying.
Oh, I, I, I understand, I, I also understand the concern. And I, I'm not, I'm not against, against that, you know, at all. But also, there is a process which we follow. And we have worked with the township, really on every, every step. And the, the, the traffic issue came up, and the, the professionals were involved in, in preparing the traffic study and recommendations. And now I, I understand, I fully understand the predicament, I guess, that the county is reactionary and they won't come up at first and say, well, okay, this is, we're going to address this. But I wonder if there's a wisdom in using this project as a, a, again, you know, for saying, well, look, we're not going to approve you until the county says so.
But, okay, I'm not gonna argue with you.
Yeah, I don't wanna argue either.
I don't, I don't agree with that's what we're doing here, but.
I understand.
So Commissioner Weber, would you, would you then say that it'd be prudent for us to proceed with a contingency on this? That, that puts the project at risk, granted, okay? But it also gives them hope that, you know, assuming that Wayne County does cooperate and get on board with this, that, that the project then becomes a go.
That's, that's the only way I, I see us being able to untie our hands a little bit. You know, I apologize if it sounds like we're using you guys as a guinea pig or, or something, but that's not, I assure you, that's not the intent, if that's, if that's what you feel we're doing. But I think we have to have some sort of assurance that these traffic issues can be addressed. And, you know, if, if it, if the project fails, then, you know, we're, we're just left with an intersection as it sits right now. But if we're adding to the problem, there has to be some mechanism in there to, to try and help solve the problem.
I think, I think, you know, when we, when we approve a project, let's say on Michigan Avenue, yeah, that's probably gonna increase traffic on Michigan Avenue. But you know what, Michigan Avenue is already built for a lot of traffic. Cherry Hill, in that particular part of the township, is not. And so this becomes even more critical for us in this decision, and also because of the fact that it is Cherry Hill Village. It is a very special part of the township. So forgive us for hemming and hawing on this. We're, we're basically concerned with you having a good position in the township. I mean, it may seem hard to believe, you know, because we're, we're delaying right now. But what it ends up is, we want you to have a good project in the township that doesn't cause hardship. You see what I'm saying? We don't want the bellyaching that, oh, yeah, I go to that Greenland store, but, you know, it's too hard to get in and out of their lot, you know, or it's a nightmare over there, especially if you go there around school time, or, you know, the things that, that were brought out in our letters and the emails that we got. So this, this hits home with us. So if you would work with us on this, let's see what we can do in terms of getting special consideration or special attention. Forget the consideration, get the attention of Wayne County. That we have this project that's important to the township, and that we need their, 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 their okay or their, their input on this. Go ahead. And then Commissioner Watkins, I know you have something you wanna say.
Well, Chairman Gray, and I'd like to hear from the other commissioners also.
Could we, could we talk a little?
This will be, this will be, the last thing I would, I would, you know, I would love to say is that, as I said before, this is a step in the process, and there's a site plan approval that's coming. We don't also mind, we would love to reach out to the county engineers. We have a working relationship with them. We can send them a letter or emails and, and along with, you know, Pat's engineers also reaching out and, and having some kind of a resolution or some kind of input for this, before the site plan approval.
Okay, okay. Commissioner Watkins?
Very quickly through the chair to Patrick. I think what would make many of us most comfortable, maybe it was just me, I think being able to conditionally approve this PD, because that'll be our first bite of the apple. There is a second bite that the developer would need, and that is the site plan review process. We can in some way allow for an approval at this level, and then not demand, but we can, there can be an expectation of some divine confluence of the traffic improvements as well as the plan, to be able to move this forward to being able for, for it to be permitted, so.
You think that would also buy us some time?
Exactly.
In order to, to get Wayne County on board?
Definitely, so through you to, to Patrick, is there an opportunity to conditionally approve this particular PD at this level, and then give us a second bite at the apple in conjunction with the county? Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Zuber?
Oh, thank you. First of all, I wanna say that I think this is a beautiful building. I fully support it as a fellow architect. I'm, I'm thrilled to see this come to Cherry Hill Village, and, and I, I think it'll be a very nice development. I also, you know, we're, we're talking about traffic more than I can remember us talking about traffic in the eight years I think I've been on the board. I, I just, my understanding always was that it's unfair to burden one particular property owner or developer with all of the traffic issues that have been going on in a particular location in the past. So we're asking Mr. Semua to, you know, to, for his project to do a whole lot that we've really never asked another developer to do, and I don't think we've, I don't think it's fair. But I get that there's problems at this intersection, but we have a lot of other intersections with problems too.
Would you, would you agree that, that if you were to overnight add this project as, as drawn, that we would have additional problems? In other words, it would increase, it would increase our situation that, that we know of, okay? That it would be additional problems. So I, I would think that it deserves a little bit more of a look than what we've been used to in the past. And a lot of times in the past, we have approved things, and we've had the traffic studies, and we knew that there would be an increase, because it's hard to go from undeveloped to developed without increase of traffic, okay? So, and then 90% of our development has been that way. But this is a situation where we can proceed with the idea that we're gonna work harder than usual getting Wayne County. In other words, we're not gonna let Wayne County wait for years and years after the project's built to get on board with us on this one. Because it's important for not only this one, but what's gonna come after this one. And I know that's not his responsibility, but it is ours, and we have to exercise that responsibility while we're here. And this might be a time for us to kinda change what we're doing a little bit. Not to say that we should, we should stop. I'm saying, I'm saying we should do it with some stipulations on this one.
I don't know what, I mean, I'm not sure what stipulations we can place on a developer, but, you know, to make this fair, but.
It's not on the developer, it's on the project. It's, and it's, and it's on Wayne County, and it's on us in order to, to legally go through the processes that we need to go through to get this as a good development. And it might, this might still take a year or so, you know, to do that. But we haven't even actually approved this, this project. So we need to go through the motions to do that in order to know exactly what we're gonna throw at Wayne County, right? Correct? I mean, it, it makes sense that we go through with our processes, but with the understanding that Wayne County's got to get on board with us soon. I, I, I don't know any other way to say this. Any other comments from the commission?
Yes, I have, I have comments. So I, I do, I love this project. I think it fits into the vision of what Cherry Hill Village was always supposed to be. It was supposed to have a place with a walkable grocery store that people could, you know, eat outside, you know, in the neighborhood. And I think we've been looking for a while for something that we could bring to Cherry Hill Village that would bring people to the community, that would allow people to walk and to gather. I think, and this isn't based on any data at all, that I'll see, that you will see a lot of people who are not driving to the grocery store, but who are walking to the grocery store and enjoying the outdoor seating area and using it as a gathering spot. I agree with Commissioner Zuber that while Wayne County definitely has to improve their process, I don't necessarily think it's fair to put that all on one developer, one business owner in Cherry Hill Village. And so I am supportive of this project, but I would like to see what we could do to mitigate traffic concerns.
Our Chair, you had a comment?
I too agree with the viewpoint laid out by Commissioner Zuber and Commissioner Sommer-Foster. I, I truly think that a grocery store, a marketplace in that area is much needed. I live within half a mile from the place, and for about a mile either way, north or south, east or west, there's no grocery store. So when we come out of the Central Park subdivision, it takes, you know, at least, it's a three-mile drive just to, just for a gallon of milk or a loaf of bread. So I understand the importance of a grocery store. Given, you know, but I have some reservations about the traffic, because we have a process. We do a traffic study, and then we try to evaluate as commissioners over here and try to understand the safety and multiple reasons, you know, so. But on the other side, in the past, we have actually approved far, far more congested, you know, situations. And we have hoped and wished that, you know, the county would intervene and take care of it. I, I do think that it would be too much of a burden on the developer at this stage. I think the onus is on us and our, you know, our township to make the collaborative effort with the, with the county and make sure that it happens. But we can't, you know, hold him to a ransom at, at this stage and say that, you know, we, we are not gonna approve the project. Because as the precedents, if you think about the precedents, we have approved a lot of such cases with weaker situations in terms of the traffic impact and failing situations.
Okay. Any, any more comments on that? Go ahead.
I just had a question. So Commissioner Foster, when you said you'd like to see it approved, but with some, did you, I don't, were the words "conditions" or ways to make it work?
Well, I, I would like us to look into ways to mitigate some of the traffic issues, but I don't think we should make it conditional on what Wayne County chooses to do, just because they've had their process for as long as I can remember, and it's been steeped in a lot of dysfunction for a number of years, if I'm being completely honest. And I don't know that it's fair to put all of that on this one project.
So, so what sort of mitigation ideas do you have?
Well, I think one of the things that's included in the, in the PDD is to prohibit left turn lanes, maybe look at additional signage, maybe look at speed, maybe look at speed bumps, that kind of thing, things that we can do to kind of, I don't know.
Right, there's some areas that.
Encourage people to walk.
Right, well, and there's, there are some areas when they leave Denton, not only when they're coming in, but also when they leave turning right. Maybe not a left turn lane in there.
Right.
Maybe, maybe, maybe off of Denton, you don't turn left into it. Maybe Cherry Hill, when you leave to go out, out of the Cherry Hill one, you don't turn left there, you just turn right. And you're not trying to do any of those left turns, I was thinking about that. And I know you had talked about trying to make sure they really do a right turn. Well, you know, you can throw a slab of cement in there, right? That you have to follow the cement to, to really be able to take a right turn. And maybe, those are some things I was, I was thinking about when looking at this, past the, the left turn, the intersection. But are those some things we could be putting into this PD?
Weber?
Well, I got a separate question, and it was, I got sidetracked on this issue, I had other questions. Patrick, can you bring everyone up to speed? The original plan for Cherry Hill Village was to have a grocery store down here, and I believe it was supposed to be on the other side of Cherry Hill, across from the fire station, correct? Wasn't that where Bush's was gonna be?
Yeah, that was at the northwest corner of this intersection. There was a Bush's, I don't know if it went through site plan approval, but it was an application several years ago.
So, and if anybody was around that time, because I, I mean, I was in the township, but I wasn't obviously in the position I am now. What, I mean, the, the traffic that something like that would have generated would have been, I don't wanna say 10 times as bad as what this would have been, but it would have been significant. And, and maybe Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, maybe you?
I can answer that question. That was, I don't know how many years ago. Cherry Hill Village didn't have as many rooftops, probably not half the rooftops that they have right now. And the issue of Cherry Hill and Denton wasn't an issue at all back in that. In fact, that was, I think that was before the fire station. And it just, it wasn't an issue at that time. Because even though you would have a traffic study, it really didn't mean a lot when you don't have a lot of traffic to worry about at that, at that point in time. Now we have a, a full-grown community there, and it, and it means a lot more. So I would say that's the, the difference. And yeah, the, the Bush's would probably have added more than what you're proposing with, with your store. But again, the circumstances are different now than they were back in that day.
True, but the plan for Cherry Hill Village was to have the density that they have down there, correct?
That's true, that's true.
I mean, I, I don't know, I don't, I don't, I'm just, I guess I'm meeting my, I'm, I'm kinda, I feel like I'm meeting myself coming around in my, because I, I feel both sides, yeah. And this is, gets back to where I feel like our hands are tied somewhat.
But they're, they're, they're tied with our concern. That's, I think that's about it, and I think you understand that, that that's, that, that's a concern of ours. And it's not falling on deaf ears from the public in terms of their concern. So I'm gathering from everybody that the, the process needs to be continued, but we have to continue it a little bit differently than what we've done in the past, where we've just basically said, okay, that's, that's the situation, and we'll see how Wayne County does. I think we, we should be a little more proactive in this one to get Wayne County on board. Would that be pretty much the assessment, to continue, but, but with a little bit different diligence?
Yeah, I, I would agree. I, I guess, because I know here we're talking about the ability to be able to include in the PD what, what the conditions we have. But if, if I'm hearing from some of our fellow commissioners about their concerns and about tying the hands of the applicant, because they do have to come back for site plan approval. Maybe we just, maybe we just, I guess my thinking is, rather than tying it to the PD, we can address some of these issues at site plan review. But I would, I would strongly request of the planning department and the engineering department that they start an open line of communication with Wayne County on how to address this situation, so that maybe we can have some answers when they come before us for the site plan review.
Yeah.
Or before they come before us for the PD, the PDD approval. I mean, can we have these conversations a little earlier, too?
Well, in this particular situation, before, before we go to site plan, we, we should have had some sort of feedback from, from Wayne County. But that shouldn't stop us from doing what we need to do tonight.
Correct.
Right?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I would like to make a motion.
Well, before you do, are there any further discussion on this? Or you just wanna leave it at the PDD level? Do you wanna discuss any other features? Anything like, you know, the ground sign, or the open space, or, you know, any of those other issues? Or you wanna leave those for site plan? Because I, you know, we, we can, we can deal with it now, if you want.
I'd like to leave them for site plan.
Okay, pretty much?
I have one, one more point that I just wanna bring up. This is a question for Pat. There was a caller who talked about the retention pond, and the, the concern that he had was the maintenance of the, the pond would be a responsibility and additional burden on the HOA. And I was wondering whether that, something like that could be part of the PDD? Is that? And I was wondering whether that, something like that could be part of the PDD, is that a fair share of the burden of the maintenance cost would have to be borne by this project sponsor?
What we would do is, we would look at the existing legal agreement, because I think that if it's a regional basin, that may be tied to this property anyway. So, there may already be the legal agreement in place to handle that. But that's something that we'll talk to our engineering division about and see if we have that agreement readily available and if it seems to adequately cover this corner property.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right. So, I think it's under review by all of us that just proceed with the principle of the PDD and whether it's a go or not. But there were stipulations in your, probably in your motion, that we may need to leave out until site plan, you think? You know, for example, the 25% space, was that touched on in the motion, in your motion?
It's, the model motion says...
About the ground sign? Because I'd like to talk about those issues.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, we don't have to do them now if you want to address them at site plan, but we can't address them at site plan if we go ahead and approve them at the PDD level.
Go ahead, Greg, go ahead.
All right, well, first off, I want to ask Patrick. Ground signs in Cherry Hill Village? I don't recall seeing any. Are there any, any ground signs?
There are some, some of which I think they would predate me working with the township, but some I think were probably included in PD agreements, which allow for modifications. So, there's the daycare farther west, just across from IHA building. That daycare has a ground sign. There's one or two buildings closer to the core of Cherry Hill by Cherry Hill Ridge, where there are some ground signs.
Right, okay.
Some of those are a little bit older. Recently, recently, say, two, three months ago, the Village Arts Factory, they obtained a variance from the zoning board of appeals to have a ground sign there.
They have a ground sign, okay.
They'll be constructing now. They didn't require a PD, so their option for getting a ground sign would be to go to the zoning board of appeals, because they're not subject to a PD agreement. In this case, they wouldn't be going to the ZBA, because there's a PD that allows for modifications. In the case of the Village Arts Factory, when they applied for their variance, our recommendation of that variance and that recommendation was approved as a condition that it not exceed six feet and not exceed 24 square feet, which is the maximum allowable area and height of a ground sign in the underlying zoning district. So, the scale of it would be no bigger than some of the existing ground signs that we have.
So, this wouldn't be the first. So, you know, that was the only issue I had, was that was this a, excuse the pun, a groundbreaking, you know, thing that we were letting happen in a village. So, I'm okay with that. The 25% open space, I think we need to look at the architecture of the business district of Cherry Hill Village, and there's not a lot of room for a lot of open space there. So, I think we have to kind of say, hey, for that, we need to not have that requirement met. You know, just for the businesses that come in there, because you're just, it's meant to be tighter, it's meant to be smaller. You know, if it was on Michigan Avenue or someplace else in the township, I'd say, yeah, we need to continue to meet that. But here, I think because of the architecture that is designed and intended for the neo-traditional space, I think that we should go along with that. And lastly, the question I have for our resident architect here. You had mentioned you really like the appearance of the building as presented to us in the elevations. Although I do have the question that was brought up before of that, what looks like a fencing at the top on the one section of the roof? It, I think, somebody had said it was a mistake before, it was supposed to be taken out. Maybe you could bring those elevations up, Patrick? This is what I'm talking about there, that whole thing up there. It was there the last time, and I'm wondering, what is that? Okay, go to one of the other ones.
Previous to that.
See, right? Okay, see that section there? What is that? A what? Okay, because it was there the last time, and we didn't get a chance to deal with it, I guess.
No, no, it shouldn't be there, I'm sorry.
Oh, it should not be there, okay. Because it looks like it's around the corner, there's a little section around the corner like there, too.
Yeah, I...
Looks like there was a fenced-in area, or is it like a place where people can go and hang out up there on the roof, or?
No, we have, and you see that, I'm sorry, you see that during set plan approval. We have a mezzanine over the entrance, and we would have some windows in there. So, as you go into the store, you would see, if somebody is sitting up there, you would see them, or, you know, it's part of the seating. I, if I, since I'm up here to talk about this open space, I would like to remind the commission that the drive on the west side, when we started with this process, the paving, and again, our drive was at the extreme south of the property. And the entire road in there was asphalt, and we had the curb cut on there, and that's when we worked with Pat. And we pushed the drive to the north and then eliminated all that asphalt in there. So, there's quite a bit of area, and I'm sure that Ms. McCormick likes that, because, right? So, I would like you to take that into consideration. I also would like, because I heard a couple of the commissioners comment on the architecture of the building, and that is not totally within, I guess, your vision for the downtown or for the style of architecture. I would like some direction on that, so that when we come back to the set plan approval, that if there are any revisions to be made, then we would have made them, instead of going to set plan and then you send us back and say, well, you know...
Glad you said that, because I wanted to get our resident architect's opinion on this, okay? So, being that this is basically the first thing people will see entering Cherry Hill Village along Cherry Hill Road, okay? If you're coming from the east, that's the first building you're going to see. Do you see that as a keystone for the village in terms of some of the features of this building? Are there things that you would change yourself, you know, in terms of like the canopies? Would you change those into awnings? Or would you do something at the top, the cornices? You know, anything that gives it a little bit more of a village feel as opposed to more of a modern building? Is there anything...
I like it the way it is, so...
You like it the way it is?
You want me to...
Oh, I'm asking, I'm trusting your opinion on it, because I'm looking at the theater, and I'm looking at the apartment buildings down Cherry Hill Road, et cetera, et cetera. And I'm wondering, you know, is, I don't know what that is. So, I'm just, I'm saying, you know, altogether, because it's a short space, really, when you look at it. And you're going to see these buildings, you know, all line up, and you're okay with that.
I am fine with that. I think it's a very nice-looking building.
Okay.
I think, and I also, I mean, you might be asking the wrong person, because I don't, I have a hard time with, like, overly cutesy planning to make it look like it's old, because it never does.
Okay, all right.
That's my personal opinion as an architect.
I agree with you.
Yeah.
I mean, what I like about it is, to me, it looks kind of like a mix of traditional and a little more contemporary. I think, I think it blends in well. And architecture is kind of in the hands, in the eyes of the holder a little bit, too. I mean, what one person thinks looks nice might not be true of another.
Okay, those are the only concerns that I had in terms of, you know, the things that would be site plan type elements.
Again, your commission has the say on that, but I would like to just present our, I guess, thoughts, sorry, our thoughts behind this, is that the fact that we did look at some of the buildings that conform to the guidelines. And frankly, and forgive me, I don't want to offend anybody, few of them are boring, you know? This is my opinion. I mean, it is the predictable cornice that you have on top of the window, and, you know, it's a, that brick with the strip window. Again, it's predictable. What we wanted to do in here is on that corner, is to create a market, not one store, but multiple stores. This is the illusion that we wanted to give them there.
We're talking planning that is over, what, probably about 25 years old? And, you know, maybe some things do need to be updated in terms of, you know, how you look at them. So, that's why I was asking Commissioner Zubor here in terms of, you know, that short span called Cherry Hill Village of Cherry Hill Road. When you look down the street, when you see this building, and you see the apartment buildings, and you see the village theater, and the liner buildings, et cetera, et cetera, would this go in there in terms of being the representation?
You look, I like working with Pat, but I am, this is meant in a good way. I am offended to say that this is like Walgreen, or what was the store there, going there?
Rite Aid.
Rite Aid. That this is like Rite Aid. There's no way this is like Rite Aid, you know?
I don't recall, I don't recall what that looks like, but I'm pretty sure it's not looking like that, so...
This is nice. And, you know, like I said, my opinion is that a lot of the neo, the new urbanism communities try to look old at the expense of beauty, honestly. I mean, it ends up looking cookie cutter, and maybe I'm going to be stoned for that when I leave, but that's my opinion. Because we don't have the same building materials that we had, you know, at the turn of the last century. Craftsmen aren't trained to do those things anymore, so it ends up looking pastiche.
Would you like to make a motion?
I would love to. But I never asked.
So, before I leave the podium, we did have some drones in here on the signage, and maybe we had a monument sign of sitting on a two-foot brick base with eight feet tall and about seven feet wide, I guess. But that doesn't conform, maybe that's why you did not consider it, because it does not conform with the standard, right? This is what we're saying.
In the motion.
Chairman Green?
No greater than six feet in height and 24 square feet in area.
And this is it for me, thank you.
Chairman Green, I just had one more question. You know, there was a concern by one of the resident about the loading and the unloading hours, because it's all surrounded by residential properties. So, if you could address that, please.
I would love to address that. As, you know, it's a fact of life that, obviously, we can't deliver products in a pickup truck. So, we're going to have, this is, there's no semis that are coming in here. The site doesn't even support that, okay? So, you have the midsize, the midsize delivery trucks. And we have actually a truck wall in there that is fully screened on both sides. Actually, on the Denton side, we have a brick wall that is a continuation of the building, basically. And on the west side, we have another wall, that, also another brick wall, so that when that truck pulls in, it is screened on both ends.
Insulated, okay.
Yes, and then, yet, on the west side of the truck, there is that trash compactor, which is, by the way, eliminating the need for a dumpster enclosure somewhere. And that one is screened also by another wall. And those were designed, obviously, and meant to be on that southeast corner, which is away from the condos and away from residences on the other side of Denton. So, we feel that's the...
Could we make it part of our motion that the delivery period, or the trash pickup period, or the use of the compactor be restricted within a certain window?
Sure.
Come up with some hours? I think we've used, what, seven, seven at night, prohibited seven at night to seven in the morning, or something like that?
Yeah, that's what we did last month, I believe, for the Dunkin' Donuts site, where it was seven to seven.
Prohibited between those hours. Or go the other way and say, you can only do it between those hours, however you want to word it.
Is this the place we do it, or is that another thing that we would do with the site plan?
Well, I think we can put that in the PDD, right?
It could be in the PDD, it would carry forward. The PDD will eventually be a recorded document in the register of deeds. So, most of them are modifications from the zoning ordinance, as well as any conditions that we carry forward on the site plan and with the developed site. So, you know, in terms of the hours itself, that would have to come, the applicant may have some knowledge of what the pickup times are. I think there's a compactor, so there'd be hours where it'd be limited to running the compactor. We have a regular noise ordinance that would prohibit that based on the noise generation. And then deliveries, there's probably food trucks and maybe different vendors, and I don't know what their schedules are, so that would be something that the operator would be knowledgeable about in terms of when those deliveries would come.
Well, can we go ahead and put it in there and then make an adjustment later if we need to?
With a PD, it'd be very difficult to, because if there's a condition in the PD agreement and that's recorded, it would take another formal amendment with a public hearing and planning commission recommendation and board action to amend that PD, to change those hours.
So, you want to reserve it for a site plan, then?
That might be best. That way, I don't know if the grocery store, the bakery operators are in attendance, if they'd be able to answer that on the spot in terms of when their deliveries would come, when they would expect those. At the very least, they would have to meet the ordinance requirements for the noise during the PM hours in the evening. I think it's maybe, I think around 10 o'clock at night, when the noise level goes way down in terms of allowable generation from a site.
Right.
So, a condition like hours should run with the use, as opposed to running with the land, as like a PD, the conditions on a PD runs with the land, is on whoever acquires that land or owns that land going forward, whereas conditions on hours are more dependent upon what the actual use is on the property. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, and also, as an example, a few months ago, when we reviewed BJ's Wholesale at the old JCPenney building, we had conditioned the operation of their compactor hours to certain times before evening and then after morning. And they had people in attendance from BJ's corporate that knew exactly what those times would be and what they were able to do and not able to do. So, at that meeting on the spot, they were able to make any commitment in terms of what hours they would run their compactor, and that was actually put in their PD agreement. In this case, I don't know if, I don't know if they know at this point what those hours would be, beyond just what our general ordinances would cover.
What do you think about those?
Yes, I just also wanted to say that earlier, there was a, some mention about businesses maybe failing or what have you. These two businesses are a proven, long-time businesses with multiple locations, so...
Yeah, I'm familiar with your store.
Likelihood of, so it's really unlikely that, and the investment that's being intended for this corner is serious, and the design for, even if you have some time to look at the design of the bakery and the mezzanines, and how people in the bakery overlook the store, and it's really, it's not just a grocery store where it's there. It's, we would like to create an event in there, as you, you know, patronize the place. Regardless, in terms of hours, I am not really qualified to do that. I am sure from their experience and their other locations, they would be very happy to address that.
I think we should put it in the site agreement, then, and we can move on with the motion the way it is.
Did we have a motion?
Not yet. I mean, I would love to make one, but people keep interrupting me, so...
I'm sorry, the only question I have, because my, the concern I wanted to raise, and I didn't get a chance to, was on the use of Market Street, or Market, the street to the west. And if everyone's comfortable about addressing that at the site plan, I'm fine with that. I just have some questions, because I see that brought up a lot in the public comments, and I want to make sure that we do talk about that a little bit. But if we, I'm ready to move on if everyone's okay, we talked, to discuss it again at site plan.
That horse is longed on. That horse is longed on. Listen, we'll resurrect it at site plan, along with the other issues. It, it's a very nice project.
Thank you.
So I hope you'll forgive us, you know, it might seem like we're a little nitpicky at times, but.
No, no, I, I understand, and I, if I said something that was not in line, I also, forgive me, please.
Now, do I have a motion?
Can I just have the next two minutes to read this, please? I move to recommend approval of the planned development district on parcel number 073-99-0001-706, subject to the following conditions being satisfied prior to township board action on the PDD. One, revising the PDD agreement to include modifications to allow for less than 25% open space, a clear vision triangle of less than 25 feet, and a ground sign no greater than six feet in height and 24 square feet in area. Two, addressing zoning ordinance compliance items noted by staff, including lighting and compactor gates. And three, prohibiting the left turn onto Denton from the site and directing market traffic to exit via the Cherry Hill Road driveway unless an alternative solution is mutually agreeable to Wade Trim and the applicant. Thank you.
Support.
All right, we've got a motion on the floor by Commissioners Zuber, finally, and support by Commissioner Eganberger. On this one, let's call the vote, please. Commissioners Zuber?
All right, Commissioner Chariah?
Yes.
Commissioner Eganberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Singh?
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
Commissioner Zuber, yes, and Chairman Green?
Yes. Thank you for your patience and indulgence. You know, we'll be seeing you, and their next step, Patrick, is the trustees, right?
Correct. The Board of Trustees will review the PD and the vote on final action on the PD, and there's a few conditions here to, to address before it goes to the board.
Can we get, and I'm not, obviously, we didn't make this a condition, but can we get, I won't call it a promise either, from staff that you will start the dialogue with Wayne County about, so that we can address some of these issues by the time they come back for site plan approval?
Yeah, we're actually gonna work on that right away with our engineering staff because we anticipate some of the same questions may come from the board. So if we start that dialogue before or we have some initial answers, we at least know that we're, that we're moving to the extent that we can with the county at this point, I mean, prior to a site plan and prior to a permit, but we'll start that dialogue immediately.
All right.
Thank you.
Fantastic. So with that, good night, everybody.
Yeah. It's past my bedtime.
Unfortunately, we have more to do. All right, so our second item on the agenda tonight is.
The second night of the agenda, did you say?
What?
It sounded like you said the second night of the agenda, but I know what you really said.
Second item. It only seems like a night.
It feels like two nights.
The MCPT Michigan Avenue LCC, where we are considering rezoning. This property is located southwest corner of Michigan Avenue and Beck, and the proposed use is an automatic car wash. Patrick, could you tell us more, please?
Sure. The site consists of two parcels, and the total site acreage is 6.85 acres, and it's located at the southwest corner of the intersection of Michigan Avenue and Beck Road. And currently, the site is zoned General Industrial with a little bit of existing C3 zoning, which is the Regional Commercial Zoning District. And the proposal by the applicant is to have both parcels fully zoned to C3, which would require full rezoning on the western parcel from General Industrial to C3 and the eastern parcel. It's roughly half and half. The northern is currently C3 and the southern half are roughly as much as General Industrial, and that eastern parcel is proposed to be fully C3. The intent of the applicant is, if the rezoning is successful, to then apply for a special lane use for a car wash at this corner. There's no site plan that goes along with the rezoning application because the rezoning application does not require a site plan, nor does it allow conditions to be placed on a rezoning. It's, it's a decision that's either an approval or a disapproval of the application. And so, but with that said, the applicant is a car wash operator, and it's their intent to apply for a special lane use for a car wash if the rezoning is successful, which is something that we typically ask of rezoning applicants of the rezoning property. We want to know a little bit about what they intend to do, and so the applicant has, has noted that. In looking at the rezoning criteria of the zoning ordinance, specifically in section 27.06D4, there are 10 criteria, and we find that all 10 of their criteria are met by the proposed rezoning. In the future land use map of the master plan, the site is classified as mixed use, and mixed use encompasses a few different districts, but one of those is C3 that's recommended by the mixed use district, especially along the south side of Michigan Avenue in this area. So a rezoning to C3 for the site would be consistent with the master plan. Next is the site that is on the east side of Beck, at the southeast corner of Beck and Michigan Avenue. It's a C3-zoned commercial property. It's a bank, so there are adjacent commercial properties along this area of Michigan Avenue, so it would not be an isolated C3 parcel and it wouldn't be an isolated commercial And the site has, the, the western parcel, it has a building on there, and it's, it's an old building. The building is proposed to be demolished if the applicant is successful with subsequent applications, and so it would get rid of a, a pretty bad-conditioned building there and would allow for redevelopment of the site. There hasn't been, there haven't been any viable proposals for redevelopment of the site for an industrial use, so a change in zoning is likely appropriate to see the redevelopment, the full redevelopment of the site and to maximize its potential in accordance with the vision of the master plan and the zoning ordinance. So with that said, our staff recommendation is approval of the rezoning, and there's a public hearing for that this evening, so prior to the public hearing, we'll be happy to take any questions.
Okay, so thank you for that, Patrick. Do we have any project representation here at all?
Yeah, there's someone in the audience by the name of Michelle Weaver with her hand raised. I, I believe this is the applicant.
Good evening, this is Cory Michelle Weaver, the applicant.
Hi, we can hear you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Would you like to tell us a little bit more about the project or did, did Patrick cover everything?
Yeah, we can certainly add some additional detail. Thank you, Mr. Sloan, appreciate the background. I'll keep this brief, but as background, we're Celine residents. We've been in the auto wash business for over a decade, almost 15 years now. We originated and, and operate and own four modern express exterior auto washes in the Ann Arbor Ypsilanti area. Perhaps you're familiar with a few of them. We have a number of new sites under contract and some additional sites in negotiation, and we're really looking forward to providing auto wash services to Canton Township residents. So we've been fortunate, we've earned the reputation as one of the area's highest-quality auto washes, and are also proud to be one of the area's most environmentally responsible and philanthropic small businesses. So again, looking forward to serving Canton Township with high-quality auto wash services, and we believe the combination of these two sites is really an ideal location for us to provide these services. The proposed use, as Patrick mentioned, is an express exterior auto wash. In our world, we define that as a conveyorized wash with automated pay terminals, unlimited plans, free vacuums, and other complimentary free services. The site plan is substantially similar to other zippy auto wash sites in the Ann Arbor Ypsilanti area. It consists of a roughly 5,000-square-foot building, 150-foot automated wash process with high-power heated drying, automated pay terminals. We do have a concept site plan that fits very nicely onto the site. It includes abundant stacking spaces behind the building, vacuum stations behind the building, employee parking behind the building, and extensive landscaping for curb-side appeal, street-side appeal, as well as vehicular screening, so. In addition, this particular site, we've integrated 1,500 square feet of southern-facing photovoltaic solar panels that would be on the south face of the building away from the street, as well as two electric vehicle charging stations for employees to use, and we do use a state-of-the-art process water recycling system to minimize water consumption on-site. So again, we're looking forward to, to serving Canton Township with the highest-quality auto wash services and looking forward to, to making the existing blighted industrial building disappear to afford us the opportunity to, to build across the two sites. So happy to take any questions also about the business.
Okay, thank you for being with us tonight.
Mr. Chairman, I move to open the public hearing.
Support.
Okay, we've got a motion to open the, the public hearing by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner Zuber. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you for that. I forgot this was a public hearing. Anyways, Patrick, do we have anyone from the, anyone from the audience? Anyone on Zoom land, anything?
I don't see anyone on Zoom with their hand raised, indicating that they want to comment, and before the meeting, we had not received any written comments.
Mr. Chairman, I move to close the public hearing. Support.
All right, we've got a motion to close the public hearing by Commissioners Zuber and support by Commissioner Weber. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so let's start at this end here. Commissioner Chariah?
No questions.
All right. Commissioner Foster?
No questions.
Weber?
No questions.
No questions from me. Commissioners Zuber?
How about the traffic? Just kidding. No, I don't, I don't have any questions. Sorry.
Commissioner Eganberger?
No questions.
Commissioner Watkins? Commissioner Singh?
No questions from me.
Hey, do I hear a motion?
I move to recommend approval of the request to rezone parcel number 128-99-0005-0702s and the other parcel, as noted, from GI, General Industrial, to C3, Regional Commercial for the reasons stated in this staff report.
Support.
All right, got a motion by Commissioners Zuber and support by Commissioner Foster. Commissioner Zuber, would you call the vote, please?
Sure. Commissioner Chariah?
Yes.
Commissioner Eganberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Singh?
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
Commissioner Zuber, yes, and Chairman Green?
Yes. Okay, our third agenda item is the Cherry Hill Village Unit 101 Site Plan Amendment, where we're considering a site plan amendment for property that's located west side of Roosevelt Street between Monroe, Monroe and Fillmore. Proposed changes to site driveways. Patrick, could you tell us more?
Sure. The site is Unit 101 of Cherry Hill Village, and this, this unit is, encompasses a building that has four residential units in it. And Unit 101 is, it's, it functions like a common area. It has a, has the driveway and the access to the residential units themselves. And Unit 101 of Cherry Hill Village, this, this parcel, has a peninsula on its west side which contains a connecting driveway between the alley to the west and the adjacent four-unit building that's, that's surrounded by Unit 101. And there are no other access points to this residential building. The applicant has proposed to remove the driveway on the west side and construct a new curb-cut access driveway onto Roosevelt Street to the east, which would be proposed to be the only access to that residential building. And the main reason for that change is that the current driveway in the west part of the site encroaches into Unit 102 because there's an existing transformer north of the existing drive that was installed when the utilities were put in. And because the transformer is in its current location, it's very difficult for the owners of Unit 102 to park in their driveway, because we have a transformer there and then there's the drive to the four units and around Unit 101, and then Unit 102 is directly to the south, so it's a very congested area. So according to the applicant, it's very difficult to, to move that generator because there are existing easements to the west of the transformer. Did I say generator? I meant transformer. That would inhibit its relocation. So installing the new driveway to Roosevelt Street will result in the removal of several arbor vida, which are proposed to be replaced on the western part of the site where the existing driveway would be proposed to be closed. The remaining area where the western driveway is proposed for removal would be seeded with turf grass. So the proposal would be to close off that western driveway so there would not be any through access from anybody else going to Roosevelt Street except for that four-unit residential structure. So previously, we had received some comments from neighbors across the street on Roosevelt expressing concern about a driveway going in. And so, looking at, looking at the concerns there, obviously where there's trees and where there's arbor vida and then having a driveway there, that's a, that's a pretty stark difference in what's there right now. And so one of the things that is important with this application is that with that western driveway being closed, there not be through access so that you get several homes now using that driveway, it would be limited to just the four homes surrounded by Unit 101, or that, that four-unit building. So the, the use of that driveway onto Roosevelt would be, would be limited. So based on the proposal from the applicant and the findings, staff's recommendation is approval of the site plan amendment to close the driveway access to the alley on the west side of the site and to construct a new driveway access to Roosevelt Street on the east side of the site. And with that, we'll be happy to take any questions.
All right, let's go to the commission. Commissioner Singh, did you have any comments or questions?
No questions.
Watkins?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
No questions.
Commissioner Zuber?
No questions.
Questions from me. Commissioner Weber?
I'm good, thank you.
I think everybody's tired.
No questions.
No, these are, these are easy.
Commissioner Foster?
No questions.
Commissioner Chariah?
I'm good, too.
All right, do I hear a motion?
I move to approve the site plan amendment for tax parcel number 074-03-000-000. Unit 101 of Cherry Hill Village to close the driveway access to the alley on the west side of the site and to construct a new driveway access to Roosevelt Street on the east side of the site. Support.
Sorry.
I hear a lot of support. All right, we've got a motion on the floor by Commissioners Zuber and support by Commissioner Weber. Commissioner Zuber, would you call the vote, please?
Sure. Commissioner Chariah?
Yes.
Commissioner Eganberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Singh?
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
Commissioner Zuber, yes, and Chairman Green?
Yes. Okay, moving right along. Site plans, let's see, number four, Canton Township Administration Building, where we're considering a site plan. Properties located west of Canton Center Road between Cherry Hill and Palmer.
They where?
West of Canton Center Road.
I'm surprised there was gonna be a lot of traffic.
Palmer. It sounds pretty close, doesn't it?
Yeah, it does.
Proposed parking lot improvements. Patrick, could you tell us more?
Sure. So on the west side of the building, there's a, some, there are some large parking lots that you may be familiar with, and there's a proposal by the township to do major reconstruction of the parking lots and some reconfiguration as well. And some of the proposed improvements include removing existing carport structures, separation of some of the parking lots between public safety and other staff and public parking lots, mostly for security reasons, and adding some landscape islands, adding security and privacy fencing, installing mechanical security gate access for the township vehicles and employee parking. And the project is planned for the 2022 construction season. The overall size of the parking lot won't change substantially, and I think we may end up with a little bit more landscaping space than we currently have based on some proposed configurations, but it'll be very close. The reason that the application is before the Planning Commission is that the Michigan Planning Enabling Act requires planning commissions to review and act on site plans for new buildings and structures on municipal property. And so in, in other cases where it's been like the Heritage Park Pavilion or changes to Fire Station Number Two or Copper Park, those are some public site plans that we've seen the last two to three years where the planning. seen the last two to three years where the planning commission has reviewed them and made decisions on them. The Engineering Services Division of Canton has worked with Manik and Smith Group in the design and scope of the project. So any required revisions to the submitted plans will be made in coordination with the Engineering Services Division and Manik Smith Group. Also, the Fire Department and Building Inspection Services Division have commented on the plans, and their comments have mostly been addressed, but will coordinate with Fire and Building Inspection Services throughout the process to make sure that any concerns that they have are addressed. For the access management, the site improvements won't impact the access to the parking area from Civic Center Boulevard or Veterans Way. The three access lanes will remain unchanged, so there aren't any new curb cuts to either roadway. The site circulation will be reconfigured. There'll be additional landscaping islands throughout the site, as well as a six-foot-high security fence and mechanical security gate access. With the fencing, it's going to be, I think, like a decorative aluminum. It's not going to be a chain-link fence or anything like that. The fence is going to be something that's sensitive to the fact that we're near a public park, but we want to also be secure as well. And I'll just skip ahead to some of the other major items. We haven't yet finalized the lighting plans, but when they are finalized, they'll be in compliance with Section 2.13 of the zoning ordinance. So we believe the lighting can be addressed administratively as long as it complies with the zoning ordinance. With the landscaping, the landscape plan includes preservation of existing trees and planting of additional trees and new landscape islands. There are some trees proposed for removal that will be replaced. And there are many of the landscape islands in the western parking lot near the public safety buildings that do not include trees, and that's mainly because of visibility for police department, fire department, and fleet services. We want that parking lot on the west side for those vehicles to be very visible for safety reasons. Therefore, the required parking lot trees in those islands are not located there, but the required trees are located elsewhere around the perimeter of the lot. So the tree requirement is met, just the location requirement is elsewhere. Section 5.07 of the zoning ordinance allows the planning commission to modify those landscape standards, and we recommend that the landscape plan be approved as presented. And then finally, with the fencing, the proposed security fencing, it's proposed to be an ornamental aluminum fence that the plan showed is dark bronze, but it'll be something that is a dark color and decorative. So with that, staff's recommendation is approval of the site plan for the Canton Township Administration Building Parking Lot Improvements, including acceptance of the landscape plan pursuant to Section 5.07 of the zoning ordinance, subject to, number one, providing a lighting plan compliant with Section 2.13 of the zoning ordinance, and, two, providing to the satisfaction of the Municipal Services Department and Public Safety Department details for the pedestals and entry control islands, signage, fencing, and gates. And with that, we'll be happy to take any questions.
I have one. What would happen if you didn't recommend approval, Patrick? Pardon? What would happen if you didn't recommend approval?
I don't know.
Would you be here at the next meeting?
Well, there may be a special meeting. I know they want to bid it out soon.
All right, just open this up for any comments. It's pretty straightforward. Any comments, questions, concerns?
What's, I'm curious, what's the rationale for requiring security?
With the, like, police vehicles, fire vehicles, and having those behind a security fence so that the access to the vehicles are controlled only by the personnel within the facilities and not having public access where people could, for example, you know, walk in or otherwise access those. So they have a configuration with the parking, both the parking lot configuration and the fences and gates to limit access for public safety, just for those, public safety personnel. And then there's, on the eastern part, there's like a staff and public type of access there that's controlled by the gates.
So the staff is behind the security fence as well? Staff parking?
Yeah, some of it is staff in general, but for the most part, it's the emergency vehicles and the Public Safety Department.
Okay. I'm just curious.
I think that it came up when they went for one of their accreditations, and I think that was kind of the impetus to do some of this.
So it's not just like you guys will be parking in this area?
Um.
The whole building staff isn't going to be in this area? It's the public safety?
Yeah, the parking lot farther to the north, I think I might have said east, but the north parking lot is mostly public safety. It's dedicated to public safety vehicles and fleet vehicles. So some of the vehicles with township logos are fleet vehicles. Those are the north side of the lot where we would want those secure. We don't want the public accessing those, and we want...
Right. And that's what's called Lot B on our plan here?
Yeah, and, well, police, fire, township-owned vehicles.
So, but Lot C and Lot D, it looks like Lot C on our plan, maybe, can you bring that up? That's also behind gates, and then Lot D outside of that is not behind gates.
Lot C, it says admin/flex.
Right, so, yeah, Lot C where there's admin/flex, and as you see on the bottom here, there's a six-foot fence, and then the six-foot fence goes around and continues up. And the fence here, which is on the south side, it's a mechanical control gate, so there's access only through mechanical controls. Entering the site, here is the pedestal area that's the north side of Lot C, which would be the primary access. So there would be gates there, mechanical gates, where staff could access it and go in and park. If there was ever public parking there, they could keep the gates up. At certain times, it would just be up to the township and public safety how they control that access based on the times of day and if there's an event or something like that. But that would be the way for staff to get in, as they would probably have to have their key card to get in those gates. And then if we go farther out from there to the west in Lot D, that's outside the gates, outside the fences where it's public access. So basically around the whole perimeter of the lot, there's public access. So someone who's going in to stop in to pay a water bill, drop off a ballot, a lot of that parking alongside the building will still be available. And the front part of the building will be available, too, for full public.
My question was, like, Lot C, that's for you and the building department staff? And is that, am I understanding that? Okay. Just curious.
Yeah, primarily, unless they keep the gates up and just have it a public access, depending on how they want to operate that.
This, it looks like the one-way is different than it is right now, so that you couldn't just kind of pull in right in front. You'd have to go down a ways and then come back.
Yeah. On the side of the building, the south side of the building? Yeah. It's only one-way on this proposed plan.
Right.
And we have, and we have the applicant engineer in attendance, Bill Knighton, who can give us more details about the designs. And I'll allow Mr. Knighton here to speak. So, Bill, you're ready to go if you want to take yourself off you?
What would happen if you didn't? Just curious. Why does it have to be?
Hand raised, which is why...
I would have been illegal tonight, pulling in.
I'd like to know that, too. Are we talking about retention or anything like that?
There shouldn't be any change to it, so...
I'm kidding.
Fingers crossed. And then Bill had his hand raised. There you go.
Good evening. This is Bill Knighton from the Manik Smith Group. Hope everyone is well tonight. I was just raising my hand to clarify the flex space, but Patrick did clarify the use of that, so it's just to open that space, that lot, on weekends or evenings when the public needs additional parking. So that's why we have the mechanical gate on the south side. It would be shut during the day when staff wants to be secure, and then when you need more public parking, it could be open to allow additional parking for special events or whenever you feel the public need is there.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a motion?
You can.
I move to approve the site plan for the Canton Township Administration Building Parking Lot Improvements on tax parcel number 084-99-0004-702 at 1150 South Canton Center Road, including acceptance of the landscape plan pursuant to Section 5.07 of the zoning ordinance, subject to, number one, providing a lighting plan compliant with Section 2.13 of the zoning ordinance, and, two, providing to the satisfaction of the municipal services department and public safety department details for the pedestals and entry control islands, signage, fencing, and gates.
Support.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Singh. Commissioner Zuber, would you call the vote on that, please?
Sure. Commissioner Ocharia?
Yes.
Commissioner Egenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Singh?
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
Commissioner Zuber? Yes. And Chairman Green?
Yes. Okay, now we go on to staff referral. We've got Desai Court, Quick Pass Car Wash, Dunkin' Donuts, and Wayne Lawn and Garden Center Incorporated. Do I hear a motion to send those to staff?
So moved.
All right, we've got a motion by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Weber to send those four items to staff. Voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next item will be, we got a public hearing. March 7th, the blessing rezoning. Do I hear a motion to set that public hearing?
So moved.
So moved. Oh, support, whatever.
All right, we've got a motion by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner Zuber setting that public hearing for March 7th. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we've got an annual report of 2021, and then we need to elect our officers. Do you want to do the report there, Patrick, or is there something that you could just send us?
Yeah, we have it in the packet. It's similar to previous years when we just went over the development proposals that we reviewed in the prior year. It was a busy year in 2021. We had probably one of our busiest years yet, and I think part of that was with COVID, there was a lot that didn't get done in 2020 that moved ahead in 2021. But I was glad to see many of our projects pick up after 2020. And then we're looking ahead to 2022 this year and working on the master plan. We should have a proposal soon from our planning consultant for the scope and price, et cetera. And we'll be coming forward soon with some zoning ordinance updates concurrent with the master plan that won't necessarily rely on the master plan to get the zoning ordinance updates done. We'll be doing those on an article-by-artikel basis, and a lot of those will be housekeeping and needed updates.
What's going on with the master plan? Was there a committee set up, or?
Sounds like they're going to come up with a way to set up the committee in February or March.
Oh.
Yeah, we're hoping to start that soon.
Okay.
There'll be more to come on that.
When did we last review that? When was that last updated?
2017, so it's been five years.
All right, well, let's go on to the election of officers.
I thought we did that last meeting.
That's why Doug's sitting next to you.
We elected you, but I think...
I thought we left you in place.
Did we go through the formal, the whole thing?
Yeah.
I thought we were electing just for, to finish out Commissioner Ingles' term.
Craig's, yeah.
But the new term starts this month, right, for officers?
All right, that's what I thought, too. I thought all we did was fill Craig's position and then...
Oh, I guess we did, yeah.
Yeah, before we go to the officers...
I'm sorry, Doug, your term has expired, so you might be at the kids' table next month.
It was a nice month for you, yeah.
Can we get a motion to recommend approval of the annual report to the township board?
Oh.
So moved.
Okay.
I am going to make all the motions.
All right, we've got a motion by Commissioner Zuber to accept the annual report of 2021 and support by Commissioner Weber. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
And then with the election of officers, the bylaws state that every February meeting, the officers are elected for that year's terms. And so Commissioner Weber was elected to vice chair at the last month's meeting because there was a vacancy on the vice chair, but it just so happens a month later, the bylaws require that at the February meeting, there's the annual election.
He's the incumbent now, so you have the advantage.
All right, I'm out. It's been nice serving you.
Well...
After tonight's meeting, you probably all want me to leave anyway.
Yeah, really. Wait, did I say that out loud?
You're ready to retire after a month.
How do you feel about staying on, Mr. Green?
Oh, if you guys will have me, I'm fine working with you, in that capacity.
Okay. Mr. Weber? Because I...
I don't talk too much.
Well, I mean, could we put a condition on your continued serving that you don't talk as much?
Let me do good news and bad news. The good news is, we like what you say. The bad news is, yeah, you talk too much. I'm just kidding you. I'm messing with you.
Do we need a motion?
I think we do.
I'll move that we accept Commissioner Green as the chair and Commissioner Weber as the vice chair for the 2022...
Can I be secretary again?
John also is our secretary.
Yep. I'm sorry, and Commissioner Zuber as our secretary for the 2022 term.
Support.
All right, we've got a motion by Commissioner Watkins and support by Commissioner Ocharia to keep the officers as they are. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that is done.
I got a question, going back to something, and I can't remember which one.
Wait, can we move to adjourn first?
Wait, wait. It's something you guys touched on, and I can't remember who brought it up, about the public comments that we get via email and having the addresses on them.
Oh, I did. I brought that up, yeah.
Patrick, would it be possible to have a tab on the website where we direct, you send the packet out and the public notice goes out, direct them to the website, and there's a form that they have to fill out to make comment on, so that it requires them to put their address in so that we know where they're coming from as opposed to just sending an email?
Something that's, that's a good point. Something that's similar to what they would have to do in person, so that make it formalized?
I don't do that here either, but, you know.
And, you know, with a note on there that, you know, for serious consideration, we need your address.
Yeah.
Yeah, to your point, you know, some of these emails, it's hard to track whether they're residents of the township.
Right, exactly.
They could just be employees of the business.
Sure, yeah.
Well, I read a few of these. It seemed like these were just friends of the people who owned the store, and because of that, and they were recommending approval, but...
A good point.
Do we need to motion to cancel, end the meeting?
Yes, we need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Support.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now we're adjourned.
Oh, boy, this thing's... Look at that. There's scratches on that.